So let's move on to the public hearing for eighty-six Main Street. Let's see if we have a hearing notice for that. Virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. At seven P M. On the petition of Fitz Eagle eighty-six Main Street LLC slash Thomas Fitzpatrick for a special permit to run a landscaping tree business and storage of trucks and equipment, along with wood and wood associated with the wood on the property located at eighty-six Main Street, North Reading, M A, map twenty-four parcel two. And do we have a Mr. Thomas Fitzpatrick here?
Yes, good evening. How are you? I'm Thomas Fitzpatrick.
Hi, Thomas. We're I am doing well. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're planning or hoping to do in this location?
So as you guys know, I currently own and operate a tree company. I have several trucks and I'm looking for basically a storage yard to park the equipment. Most of our work, we go out onto people's properties for the site and we make people's yards better, remove the trees. At the end of the day, we bring our trucks back and we have the material within the trucks, which we need to dispose of. So it's clean material. It's only wood grindings. And we'd like to store it at our property to therefore take it and reprocess it to send it out back out. So it saves time. I mean, currently, right now, I usually pay my guys an extra hour or two an evening to transport it to different dump sites to dispose of it. And it would be a lot more economical if I could put it within when I have full complete loads, then I could make a load and then dispose of it. I mean, I'm just looking to, you know, again, to operate my business in a safe place that I can potentially call mine also, mine and my wife's. And we we have a safety factor to store our equipment.
Appreciate that. So and Jerry, I'm going to ask you to weigh in on this, along with, of course, everyone, all the other members, but we're in a highway business district here. And let's see, you're asking for a special permit. Or in a landscaping business can be allowed by a special permit. But I don't see anything within our bylaws that allows truck storage or you know, the sort of material storage. I know there's been some historical uses like that along Main Street. But there's there's definitely been some some work in town to try to try to move away from just vehicle storage along Main Street. So Jerry, could you help give some thoughts on this? I'm just not seeing how where that would be prohibited, permitted.
That's not permitted. Truck storage and storage of vehicles is not permitted. We currently, I don't want to say the address, but we currently have one in Superior Court relative to that on Main Street. And I would just like to leave it at that at this point in time. Because they had they had storage there and we're not allowed to have that type of storage. Once again, on Main Street.
And so as I, as I understand, just from reading the bylaws and what's permitted, a landscaping business could could be there. I mean, it's really the whole point of Route twenty-eight or the highway business district is supposed to be retail, retail focused. And if you were kind of falling within you know, somewhere where someone's coming to buy landscaping products, that would be different, or even just having your office, your if you were having office and having customers come in to hire you or engage you, that would be different. But the
I guess it's it's I'm sorry to cut you off. It's more of like a general thing where, yes, I need a full-time office to have my sister who's helping me there for the paperwork, the bills, the invoicing. Currently, I live in Redden. I would I am looking actively to move into North Redden myself for a personal place. I'm using my house in Redden as my mailing address. We also would like to do retail for firewood. So it's, I guess you could say, maybe I misworded fully on the truck storage part, where I would be keeping the equipment there, but also potentially creating firewood for resale, wood chip for resale. And with being on Main Street, it would be a great place for people to have the publicity for firewood or wood chips or mulch to say, to be for people to buy from our company. You know, where if I was in the back of the wood somewhere, no one would know that I sold firewood or wood chips to say. So you know, the equipment that we use, it's not necessarily just storage. It's it's using it to produce a material for retail. If that kind of helps interpret it.
I think we still have it. I mean, there's still an issue with having all the vehicles there. That's I mean, that's not kind of what that area is really intended for. Ben and Bob can
So if we're talking about just storage of vehicles, I think Jerry would note the same as I just run through the businesses that run along twenty-eight specifically. I can't think of anyone. The ironically, the closest vehicle storage location is the other matter on the agenda tonight, which is the rental of the rental business purposes, which which is a totally different approach. Moreover, if the idea here is that the materials are going to be used to produce the product that are going to be sold in theory, now it's a manufacturing interest, which I don't think is going to be permitted in bylaws either. So you've got a lot. You've got a lot of mixed use here that I don't think is permitted by the bylaws and the specific purpose of the property.
Bobby froze. You froze there.
As he has been represented.
Bobby froze there for a minute.
Okay. Sorry. So again, if if the materials are going to be used for producing product, now we're talking manufacturing. And I, you know, that's now we're now it's becoming even more of a mixed-use purpose than just retail commercial, if you will.
I mean, I'm I'm open for suggestions on how you guys would prefer to go about anything. I mean, it's I really like the town of North Redden. And I think you guys have a great community, a great area for, you know, my wife and myself to grow our business and our family. And I would love to be a part of your community. And I, you know, I we've looked at a lot of other places and it's just it's hard to find, you know, within any town, you know, like areas to, you know, what? I mean, this is our first one we're trying to go up for. So if you have recommendations on what would help suit, you know, and make everyone satisfied, you know, I'm not sure.
So in terms of areas where, and Jerry, you can help me on this, where you could actually store vehicles in town, are you allowed to do that out in Concord? Or is that it's another one that's kind of that's actually those are all retail. They're selling equipment. That's questionable, too. If
That's an industrial area. Concord Street's industrial. I don't have all the zoning bylaws in front of me already, unfortunately.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jerry.
Kathy, do you have that there right in the office, the industrial I O. I O. Business area? We can help these people out.
Because we we definitely want businesses to be able to grow. We love people who want to come to North Reading. You're saying Main Street isn't where that section of Main Street isn't where we would be able to allow you to have your your vehicles stored. If it were more of a traditional retail, that's that's allowed. You can be there to do that.
Howard, how does like the landscaping company fall in if they're parking their trucks and trailers there for their storage to go out? You know, what's the, you know, within the same idea of it? What's the difference with them putting trucks and trailers and lawnmowers there versus us with trucks and hedge trimmers and chainsaws, you know, the similar idea?
So if it's, you know, Reading lumber down the street, they do have they do have their trucks for delivery out back, but it's you know, the front of it's all customer parking. And it's a retail store with the you can pick up your pick up lumber in the back or have they have some delivery trucks in the in the back. So that's that's one example of someone right down the street from that location with a retail business.
From what I understand, speaking with C P C, Reading Lumber basically is grandfathered in for a lot of the that they that they do have there. And the zoning bylaws changed. Since the zoning bylaws have changed, this does not become a property use.
Okay, but what I'm what I was asking is, you know, the difference like so landscaping is allowed to go for a special permit to occupy it. So for a landscaping company, they would essentially need, what would they be permitted there, though, that would allow them that would be different than a company such as mine? First, you know, they would have to store their trucks there to go in and out.
That's doesn't mean they would get it. It doesn't mean they would automatically get it. That's why you you could be here. You're here before the zoning board of appeals. First off. Secondly, you have very large equipment. You have cranes. You have really large trailers. So a small landscaping company is just that. A small landscaping company. You're totally different.
Okay.
You're on a much larger scale.
That's what I was asking is originally when we were going through the process, we understood that, you know, when my sister was speaking, that we fell in within the landscaping section of this. So that's part of the reason why we progressed with everything. Or else, you know, we wouldn't have even tried to waste, to try to do anything of this nature. You know? We're just based
Well, I sent you to the zoning board of appeals because I denied it. I sent you to the zoning board of appeals because I denied the fact that you could have that type of business there. That's the reason why I sent you there.
Anything was denied. I'm sorry, Jerry. We were never aware of anything that we were just aware that we had to go for permits and we fell under a landscape. And I this is the first we've ever heard of anything. Have you, Jen?
No, that's the first I heard it was denied. I thought we had to get a special permit in general for that property.
And that was the only reason why we we followed this course and went with it. And then, you know, when she was in there, you were the gentleman that spoke up and said it was part, you know, we fall under the landscape. And that's the only reason why.
Oh, it is. No doubt. There's there's no doubt that falls. If you look under it, it looks under it says horticultural and landscape. It does say that without a doubt. But these only board of appeals right here are the ones that basically can, you know, tell you, yes, you can have that or no, you can't have that. And it's relative to a special permit. So the special permit process is what you're going through right now. If they tell you no because of the because of the size vehicles you have, or they tell you no because of it's a manufacturing, then that's a total different.
No, I understand that.
What I mean by what I mean by denied, what I mean by denied, I mean, I don't mean to say denied. I mean, by I send you to the zoning board of appeals because it's relative to a special permit. I can't issue you a an approval. I can't issue you an approval relative to what you were looking for. Because that's not my authority. But I would have to basically I guess the only word I can still say is deny and and send you to the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals then gives you the option to to move forward with that or not. So that's where I stand with that at that point in time. I don't know if that was if you understood that or not.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, you know, I didn't know that, you know, this is how it felt from the beginning. Like I said, or else we wouldn't have pursued this at all. And we wouldn't have applied for it, you know, if we knew upfront that, you know, this was kind of
I just thought it. We just needed a special permit in general. I didn't realize.
Yeah.
But Well, a special permit, a special permit is never is never a guarantee. And that's why they have the zoning board of appeals. There's a lot of people that apply for special permits and some get them and some don't.
And is there anything different we can do or no? Right. All right. It's just you guys are a hundred percent against everything.
Not. There's definitely things that can be done on this on this property. You know, it's a smaller piece of property. It's right on Main Street. So that's going to have some it will have a lot of impact on what can be done there. But given that, I mean, you're right on the right on the road there.
I mean, what would have been the hope in the future was, you know, potentially how the fence comes along the road would be to try to put some type of building there to block off the back section. So it was nice and cleaned up, put some flowers, some plants, some nice, you know, I'm an arborist. I have a degree in agriculture. Try to decorate it with a nice design and layout and make it more appealing for the main road. I mean, the guy is ass and and it's extensive amount of money. And that's why it's been vacant for so long because no one's willing to pay. And he's very difficult as the seller is very difficult, I should say, to to deal. And so when I finally was, you know, I was willing to pay what he wanted. Yeah, I was hoping, like you said, because it's on the road, you could put a building up along the road, which would block everything in the back, essentially. So you would come in the gate and then everything would be behind the building, blocking it all. And then that would potentially help clean up Main Street. Because again, for what the gentleman's asking, it's just, I know a lot of landscapers that talked to me about it and they just said, oh, the price is way out of line. But I mean, if that's how you guys feel, I understand. And I mean, I'm a firm believer, things are meant to be. And if it's not meant to be, then, you know, it is a very expensive property. And I question too, if I should spend that kind of money on it. So.
So I think all all very good points. If if you're I if your thought was that this was going to be a location where you can kind of offload the trucks from whatever the the cuttings were from that day and store the trucks on the front part of the property, I don't think that's going to be something that this board would be comfortable with. If it were, if you were coming in with a design to put another building up there with, you know, plans and a proposal. Obviously, that's something that we'd be excited to hear about and we'd want to look at. But sort of as with what we have thus far, I I wouldn't be comfortable with with what you're suggesting. So.
Okay. So I mean, my ultimate idea, you know, I mean, everything involves money to say. But this is for I was hoping like I had in my mind, if if everything worked out is depending on what style building and what you guys approved of was potentially putting up like a sixty-foot wide by maybe a hundred and fifty-foot long building. On the back side of it, you have, I don't know, five, six bays, whatever it pertains to for the math calculations. And then you have a nice building up there, like you say, along the road, which blocks the back section out. But, you know, I would hope within the year I could, you know, afford to do all that. And I mean, I the banks, they were willing to do construction loans and stuff. I mean, if you guys think that it's a possible possibility, I have no problem doing all that work. But if you guys don't even think it's worth considering, then, you know, I'd rather just kind of turn and go the other direction. But if you if you would like the idea of seeing, you know, a building on a hundred and fifty feet long by sixty feet wide, kind of along the main road, where I come in behind it, I would like to knock down the other building that pre-exists and do something like that, then, I mean, I would pursue it. But if if you don't like the idea, you know, to begin with and stuff, you know, it's going to be a lot of time and material and money spent to try to even approach something like that, not to mention the seller. He knows every, you know, he's he's trying to like, try to tell me how to do things. And obviously, like I say, I have to abide by the town and do what is the right steps, you know. So, I mean, he wanted a deadline to pass within, you know, by the end of the year, which I already thought it sounded a little bit soon. But, I mean, with all that aside, is that something that I would just be kind of spinning the wheels and wasting time? Or would you like to see a building proposal with everything that would be blocked out and behind it with the original building coming down?
So just speaking for myself and not the the board as a whole, I mean, absolutely would love to see the plans for redevelopment of this parcel. But it it really we couldn't approve, pre-approve anything. But because you would have to comply with all the setback requirements of the zoning bylaws, you would have to come in front of of C P C and potentially this board, depending on what your proposed use was, with the plans. And we'd have to take a look at those. But, you know, it's it's definitely, it's interesting. There's there. We're not saying you can't you can't do anything here. We'd love to see this part of Main Street get get a get an upgrade, get a facelift. So but I understand it's 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 time and money for you to kind of invest in, invest in the property, invest in plans, and then go through the process with the town to get something approved. If, on the other hand, if you're doing something that's you know, completely meets all the setbacks and it meets the the retail use as of right, you you don't have to come see us again. You would just go to Community Planning Commission for approval of the plans.
We do know what the setbacks are off the main road there roughly.
Roughly, I believe those are twenty-five feet from the front, twenty from the side and the rear. You've got you've got some, no, I don't. I don't know what this
Fit in twenty-five feet off the road? No.
Twenty feet from the front, twenty off each side and back.
Twenty-five feet. Yeah. And I mean, the type of business we're running, though, anyways, wouldn't even if we were to consider put up a building and garage base to say in the back, that type of business doesn't appeal to you guys really anyways, it sounds like it.
Well, it really depends on what you're doing and how you set up this site. I mean, if you were, you know, to again, speaking from my my perspective.
People mind chiming in also when she's completed, please?
Absolutely. The you know, how this property looks from the street is important. So storage of vehicles, storage of vehicles isn't allowed, as the building inspector told you already. So it would have to be, I don't even know what sort of what vehicles could be there in connection
Sorry. So you guys keep going back to storage of vehicles. What is the classification of storage of vehicles? Is it overnight parking? Or is it like just parking for a long term? Or like, how do you classify for storage of vehicles? Could you some? Could you define that a little bit better for me, please?
That would be within the zoning bylaws. Once again, I don't have those in front of me, the storage of vehicles. But you're the one that had mentioned at the beginning that you were planning on storing vehicles.
Yeah, I just assumed overnight parking was something that potentially fell under the storage of vehicles. So I this seems to be a big hang up on your part or everyone's part. So that's why I was trying to see if you guys could define that a little bit better, I guess, of what the definition was. And I mean, again, I apologize. This is my first time. I'm trying to do everything I can to, you know, build the business and do it the right way. And I I just want, you know, I try to do everything I can to make sure everyone's happy.
If you say parking of vehicles or storage, like that's what I guess he's trying to ask because he parks his vehicles there. But then they stay there, obviously, and then they leave during the day. So that's why he calls it storage. They're not dead. They're vehicles that run. They're registered. They're not just
They pay excise tax, you know, every every year, you know, road taxes, sales tax.
So it's not that he's just storing equipment to sell it or anything like that. They're vehicles that are used. So they're parked there.
I mean, I could technically park them anywhere, you know, say, like she's saying, they aren't immobilized.
So I could see you having, you know, anytime that we have someone who has vehicles on site that are going to be parked overnight, we have a limit on how many vehicles and where on the site they can be. So if you're coming forward with a plan that has, you know, a building in the front and then there's limited storage of a certain, well, limited overnight parking of a certain number of vehicles or equipment behind that the front. I mean, that could be something we could talk about. But as Jerry said, there's going to be limitations on the the nature of equipment that can be on site and that's coming in and out. It's just the, you know, considering where you are on Main Street, what's appropriate for that location.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Jerry, you were the first one to say that, you know, it was denied on the first go around to go to the special permit. So what is your outlook on this?
It's not it's not denied on a special permit. It's it's denied relative to, I can't just issue you a permit to say, yes, you can go there. I have to deny it and send you to the zoning board of appeals. I don't have a choice. That's part of the that's part of the bylaws. That's part of the laws. So it's not just it's not just a thing I'm telling you is denied. It's denied on my part because it needs a special permit.
And that's what gets you to the zoning board of appeals.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. So now, if we came with this proposal or this plan, you know, it's the same thing. It would say we'd go to you first, then you would bring it to the, then you'd say, no, now you have to do this step. And then we would go in front of them. Oh, say, I'm sorry, them, you guys as a group. And with that said, I mean, let me ask you, I mean, straight up, like, are we wasting everyone's time? Are we just kind of going, you know, like, is it, do you guys strongly feel I should just look elsewhere, whether it's in town or another town? But I'm just saying, is this a property you guys prefer not to see, you know, developed there by a tree service?
You need the zoning board of appeals to any the them to basically answer that question. Like I said, I've already sent you to the zone of appeals to get their opinion.
So they're on the video now. So would you guys that are part of the zoning board of appeals, please weigh in one at a time? Way in one at a time and let me know what your thoughts are, because again, as everyone knows. You know, everything costs money in this world, as you guys see. I, yeah, I have nice equipment, but I work twenty-four hours a day, if I'm not. Physically turning wrenches or so, I'm thinking about it. You guys are, I'm well-known in town, there's no lie behind that, so. I, I want to do what's right, but I have a lot of things I have to weigh out al- also between. I'm hardworking to make my money, nothing comes easy, you know, my hands are destroyed from doing this, so. Are we wasting our time to try to put a tree company within this area? Ideally, you know, would you guys mind weighing in on this factor, please, each one separately from the zoning board of appeals, please?
I submitted tonight, I'd be, I'd be hard pressed to approve it.
I'm in the same category.
And I could say that for this, this reason is that. The plan that you've put forward is really, it is not a lot of detail, and I know what you've spoken up tonight in, in your. Your uh. You what your plan is, and it's all sincere, I can tell by the way you phrase it, but at the same time, um, we have to. We have to consider it for, for more than just. Um hopes to or is intending to do, in other words.
I, I understand all that. But what is, what I'm trying to say is.
For an area of the town that is mostly strictly retail, the idea of storing. Large vehicles or multiple vehicles, it's, it's just out of the nature of that zoning. That e- area, and while the, the board of appeals is here to allow variances. It's not here to grant something that is going to be a large scale change in the, in the use of that area, so. You, to, to, to tell you that. You know, if this happens and that happens and this happens, then you should be okay, because it's still.
I'm not, I'm not looking for you to say it's okay or something, I'm just saying, in general, with that piece of property. You guys within the board, even if we try to meet all the criterias, it still kind of seems. A company such as my nature would be best not to be on that specific property. Is what I'm pretty much saying, even if we tried to jump through hoops and. Your lawyers and engineers and do everything right, even if you come all down to that. At the end of the day, the general consensus is. A different piece of property would ideally be better, is kind of what I'm trying to get at, like, you know what I mean?
You don't want it set on Main Street at that property.
Specifically with how does uh, with where you, it's not that you don't want it, with how everything is phrased within the bylaws. It's, i- it's kind of best not to be within that, that.
The, correct, the town fathers, whenever they set the zoning in place for that location. Set the zoning the way that it is, it's up, it's up to us on appeal of that. And, and to, to look and evaluate, you know, what, what is? If, if you were looking for a five-foot, you know, a, a, a measurable, uh, you know, say the building that you talk about. And you needed, you know, s- some relief. Um, that's something that we often consider. Um, to, to, to do an overall change to the property. The way that it's currently zoned isn't something that I know in the year plus that I've been on the board, I've never seen.
Okay, so, yeah, it's not really favorable. You know, and please, I'm not trying to single any of you guys out, and I'm not trying to. Hold anyone accountable, I'm just looking for more of a general consensus for how everything is worded. I was never the best with reading, spelling, with English, I was always going to work on my hands, so. I'm just looking for interpretation from the people that would know best how to understand the rules and regulations within.
I think your time and energy and money would be better spent some, in a, in a different. In a different location, it's just the nature of where you're all looking to go, if you, if you drive along Main Street, if you go from. Basically, the lobster place all the way down past Stop and Shop. Effect, just on twenty-eight itself, you're not going to find. A large-scale business as the one that. I really not sure how big your business is now, but I want to believe that it's going to become as big as, I don't know, any number. Or tree or removal uh interest that grind and and do that kind of work, that's great. But if that company ca- if, I don't, if East or whatever came to us today and said, hey. We want to put one of our stores there because we're a large franchise that rips up trees all over New England. They'd be answering the same questions. We're asking you, and I don't think they'd be able to find the way, no matter how deep their pockets were, because you're asking to change. You're asking to put a business, the nature of which. Not. Appropriate, if you will, for that zoned area, if it was strictly industrial, Concord is an excellent example of that. All of those interests that go along Concord Road, they're not walk-in stores, so to speak, they're not classic retail, even if they were to sell. Uh bobcats, they're still not the idea of. I just don't know how you're going to, I don't, I think your time and energy and money.
And I, trust me, I much appreciate it, everyone, you know, this more upfront. Then, you know, our, you know, our hopes of, you know, different things, because. We've had hopes for the last month or two, two months, you know, we started talking to this guy back in May, and he's saying. Oh, it's great following in, it consists in that, and I kind of had the same thought you did, but the owner, the seller's saying another thing, and he's. You know, so we had our hopes up to say, and like anyone, you have your hopes when you do anything, you buy a car, you go buy a new piece. Piece of sneakers, you, you have your hopes up, but, you know, just to know that. You know, that is not a suitable um zoning to say within, to, to jump the hoops to try to work, it's. I appreciate that, you know, we're better off to try to find a different um. Piece of part, of different parcel to say, and um, you know, that's the biggest thing that. That's, you know, I ref- respectfully understand and just, that's what the guidance I was looking to say.
As you go forward in your search, I mean, you're looking for almost commercial industrial as opposed to. Um retail mix, and it's maybe a sign of where we are, you know. But most small towns or towns are going to be a little bit more. They're, they're less likely to just suddenly say we're going to change the entire focus of an area, so as. You know, the pressure you're getting from the seller, I, I have a very clear understanding and respect for that. But I, I, I'd be hard for, I would, I'd be, I'm at, I just don't know if. I don't think you could get through the hoops that you'd need in order to. Put what you've described to us tonight um on Main Street. I, I don't want to see you get any, I don't want to see you spin your wheels in the least, let alone. Extend yourself for something that you probably won't be able to achieve.
And I, I really appreciate that, um, now at the close of this. Will you guys give me a letter stating something that it was formally rejected, because my PNS all depends on this. And I have a heavy deposit that is non-refundable. If I, it's refundable pending, I don't get my permits to do. Operate my company, and the guy would not put in the bank anything, all he would put in there is permits. Because he said left and right, you're gonna get them, so.
Madam Chairman, uh, maybe we should have some input from the abutter, I think Mr. Dean Atali is, is here for. Comment from public, which might sway the board for um, towards a approval denial, just for the record.
And absolutely, if we have people who came and want to speak before we close the public hearing, like to give them that opportunity. Um, Mr. Dean Atali, you'd like to. Um voice any comments before we close the public hearing?
Want to say thank you for the uh opportunity to, to speak to you. And the distribution of, of the uh. Um attachments were received.
Yes, we did receive those, thank you.
So that says it all.
Fair enough, I would, I just note for the record that Mr. Dinatali uh submitted a letter in opposition of. Of the proposed use, um.
Madam Chairman, may it help, I'll just read the letter into the record and just create it. Uh, letter dated October fourteenth, uh, to the attention of the North Reading Town, uh, Town of North Reading, Attorney Zoning Board of Appeals. I am Art Dean Atali, speaking on behalf of eighty-four Main Street, which is addition to eighty-six Main Street, for the record, that's the application. Um, address, we received the notice of tonight's hearing, granted the proposed wood processing landscaping business at eighty-six Main Street. Thank you for this opportunity to express our concerns, we create highlighted, and then attach PDF visual with an audiovisual hyperlink. Given the direct proximity of eighty-four Main Street to the proposed use, several immediate issues arise. Relative to the site and overall situation, prob the following questions that respectfully outline for your consideration. Is this used in line with the town, North Reading's vision for Main Street? Is site conducted for the use in this condition, how this use affects others in this vicinity? In sense, uh, in particular, um. Mr. Dean Atali points out that the current topography also seems to have limitations for safety issues. And that the use of any large machinery such as chainsaw chip is at the. Noise levels, which would not be compatible with other uses, and would also have a significant adverse effect on those in the vicinity, namely office. Retail and general uh public use, thank you for consideration, respectfully submitted, Art Dean Atali, I would. Offer for the record that um, Mr. Dean Atali has outlined several issues that would um be. Uh, an objection to the um, to the applicant's um, uh, request for variance.
So I just have a question on that aspect now, so. What's the difference between Art's property and the one I was looking at, because. Art was trying to get me to go in there and rent, he has ten businesses in there renting from the back, as well as. A wood processing business going on in the back and a cement. Uh, sand and gravel mixing company going on also. So what's the difference with what he's running, whereas what I was trying to do as an owner operator? I just, you know, I understand that, you know, I'm gonna back off. But I was just looking at the differences for what he was operating, just to get a better sense of that area. Because if you go down the property, he has about ten different rental spaces with different stuff.
Well, that's a, that is. Good information to have, um, they, at least during our tenure, have never come in front of us for a permit for what they're doing. Um, at least not to my recollection, so that may be something that our building inspector would like to take a look at in his uh. Hope his free time. But, no, it, and to your, your point, there, there really shouldn't be, there should, there isn't a difference. Um, other than that's a, that's a large property, does have some backspace, we haven't been involved in the permitting of that. Um, but if they were coming in front of us today, they would get the same. Hear the same questions, would be also concerned about impact on. On, on being right on Main Street, is there noise impact, what is the impact on, on the abutters and. So, um, a fair point, and one thing I, uh, one more thing I would just. You had mentioned earlier about your, this um eighty-six being grandfathered. To my understanding, there's nothing operating there now, so there's no use that.
I, no, I understand that, that's what the, the seller was trying to tell me.
I, I just wanted you to be aware that that's not.
No, I, 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 I agree with that, you know, I was just confused because um. There's another tree company, a perfect cut operator out of ours, so, but. That's okay, I'll let you guys close the meeting, I know it's Jerry's birthday, and I'm sorry, I was just trying to get knowledge for myself. On uh, how to proceed in the future, so.
But I, I would love to see you back in front of us, uh, you know, either a different property or a different plan for this one, um, so.
Do you have any recommendations of areas, or can we come to another time?
Well, it's late, they want to go, we'll look around.
Yeah, uh, that, I don't know what's on the market right now, but. Take a, take a look, um. Did we have anyone else from the, from the public, it was like, before we close this?
I gotta see if I'm gonna, am I gonna get a statement from you guys, something, or what would I have formal to show my, um, the seller?
So if, if we vote on this and deny it. Which I think is what you need to. Your purchase and sale, if that's your choice, um. And just so you know, once we deny this, you can't come back asking for the same thing and the same property for a two-year period, so. But it sounds like, because we, I would typically give you the option of withdrawing or us voting, voting it. And it, it seems from the board, your poll of the board that it will be denied. And I think the denial is actually better for you than. All right, uh, that being said, like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, and then I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for a special permit.
Bob Green, um, uh, vote denial.
And.
Vincent Rigucci denial.
And Jennifer Platt as denial as well. All right, so we hope you find the, the right location, and we get to see you again um with a, a different result and. But thank you for, for going through the process with us, we appreciate that, and wish you the, the best on the next space.
Oh, good, thank you very much, have a wonderful evening, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, um, while we have, I see we have Maria here. I would like to um take an opportunity to um. Do the public hearing for. One sixty-seven North Street. And Vincent, you will need to recuse yourself from that. Let me, and. If you don't mind, I'm going to just ask you to, um, I'm gonna open the public hearing, but ask you to just mute yourself through this one. Um, the virtual public hearing will be held on Thursday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, seven PM, and the petition of Vincent J. Rigucci. The third, one sixty-seven North Street, North Reading, MA, map twenty-seven, parcel forty-seven for a home occupation special permit for consulting business. Per article two hundred dash forty-two North Reading zoning bylaws, and after I just told you. Um, to mute yourself, you are gonna have to tell us what you plan to do at this location, if you would be so kind, Mr. Rigucci.
Sure, so it's pretty simple, I, I do consulting work from uh the house. For um global engineering and construction companies. Um, I don't meet with anyone, uh, all the work is done by computer or telephone. So merely for the purposes of um operating an office from the home, which isn't currently permitted. Um, I'm making that request. You're muted.
That's one way to keep me quiet. Hi, Mr. Rigucci, are you familiar with the requirements for a home occupancy permit?
Oh, I sure am.
You might have seen one or two of these, um, and just confirming. This consulting business, so no outside storage of wares or goods, no more than three hundred square feet of the residence to be used. No person other than yourself employed in your, in the, from the home in your consulting business. Right, Maria, any questions for Mr. Rigucci?
I don't think so.
So I, real quickly, any, any client use of the pro, of your home for business purposes, or is it all remote from?
Everything is remote conference calls. Video, that's it. Telephone and just doing work from my home office.
I assume there's, is there anyone here for this public hearing? Any butters? We did have two letters of support in the file to.
I have them in front of me, Mrs. Madam Chairman, if I might. Mr. and Mrs. Demetrius and Margarita Mira of one sixty-nine North Street, North Reading. Regarding the Ruguchi permit for consulting business home, dear Ms. Morgan. We, the residents of one sixty-nine North Street, support our neighbor, Mr. Vincent Ruguchi in his decision to conduct business from his house. Kind regards, respectfully, Dimitri and Margarita Mira. In an email sent to the attention of the zoning board, hello. Hi, I live on one sixty-eight North Street and received a letter from Vincent Rugucci on one sixty-seven North Street. Would like to have an office in his home. We completely support it and have no problem with it. Thank you, Paula, Paul, excuse me, Paul, and Anika Pianessa. And finally, with regard to Mr. Gucci's application. Planning typically responds at all criteria for home occupation special permit is stated in the design law. So any bylaws be adhered to. Effectively a tacit acknowledgement, so long as he's meeting the criteria, would appear that planning doesn't object to the application.
Mr. Brain, that being said, like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Bob Green.
Maria, would you?
Maria Lockhart.
Thank you. And then all in favor, or actually, I guess we just need to make a motion to approve the special permit.
Second. Oh, I mean, I'm sorry.
Making a motion to approve a special permit for on the petition of Vincent J. Ruguchi.
Barbara nine.
Sixty-seven North Street. Thank you, Mr. Ruguchi. That will be signed by the board and sent to the clerk. Town clerk for approval. All right. We have one more item on our agenda for this evening. Vincent, you may rejoin us for this. This is a continuation of the special permit for construction landscaping business at three forty Main Street. And we have a hearing notice to more formally read. I missed a hearing notice for that on the continuance. Could I go right by it? And it's it, but we will reopen the public hearing for three forty Main Street. Do we have the applicant or his attorney here? We had spoken a month ago.
I'm sorry. This is, my name is Michael Pinta. I've been retained. I represent not the landscaping company, but I represent Jose Gonzaga Saw as well as his entity, JSA LLC.
Wonderful. Good to have you here this evening. As you, as you know, we met a month ago to talk about this property. There was a request for a special permit. There are and have been a number of issues with this particular property in terms of vehicles being stored on it, multiple users without permits. And we asked Mr. Saw to both address some of the existing non-compliance issues and come back to us with his plan for this property. So perhaps if you can give us an update on where things are.
So I was not involved a month ago. So I'm sort of coming to this somewhat late. So excuse me for not knowing some of the background, but essentially probably the biggest changes since he was last before you is that I've basically been retained to evict the tenant. The tenant is, just from this violation that's been issued by the town, that's a violation of the lease as well as the tenant is behind on rent. So they've already been, since I've been involved, been served with a notice to quit. And the expiration of the vacating period is basically on Monday. And so what I plan on doing is sometime next week. After the fourteen day period is over, I'll be filing a summary process complaint in Woburn District Court to evict this tenant. So my client's not looking at this point to, for a variance or for a special permit. We're going to be taking the possession back of the property and the landscaper will no longer be using the property. And as far as when I think that will happen, I mean, you know, this is a commercial eviction, so I'm not subject to some of the problems with residential evictions, obviously. But nonetheless, the, the court system is sort of running less than speedy these days. But I still think unless there's some kind of fight or objections I get, which I don't know what they would be. I'm confident I'll be in court on this some, by sometime in early November is what I'm hoping.
That's great. That's good news. I'm sorry you have to go through the process, but we very much appreciate that you're involved in helping Mr. Saw take, take some proactive steps with this property. And we'd love to see you back here when you're ready to, to talk to us. There was a, a request for a special permit had been filed. I don't think we're you know, anywhere, as you said, ready to, to hear that. We could continue the existing public hearing for maybe two months to give you time to work on the eviction process and then reconvene if that makes sense to you.
Yes, I, I think it does. And a couple of months would probably be, hopefully I don't need that much time, but one never knows.
Just curious, how many parties are involved in the, the notice, the eviction? I know there's the the one that's the primary, but with the multiple business interest, you, you anticipate problems with multiple business interest within that. Address.
The U-Hauls there, the landscaper, I forget who else is on.
Well, there's, there's two different tenants. One is the one I think we've been talking about is the J and R Fine Landscaping. Which is a Mr. Goddard, I believe is the head of that. And then there's another tenant that's also being evicted, which is, excuse me, which is Payne Auto and Truck Center. For the same reasons, by the way, and he's well behind on his rent. He owes my client a lot of money. So I don't know if that answers your question, Mr. Brain.
No, I'm just curious if.
And are those the, the sole two tenants at the property at this point?
I'm, I'm gonna defer to my, my client, one of my clients who's an EEO is on there. Can you just answer that? Are there any other tenants at that property? We can't hear you. I don't know if you're on mute. You're still on mute.
That's, I, to be honest with you, I don't think, I just was curious. That's all. Because we had spent so much time in the last.
Yes, we can hear you now. So are there other tenants other than these two?
No, they are all being removed as of right now. They are the only two left in the property. Yeah, we are working on it.
Wonderful. Thank you. We appreciate that. Anything else at this time, or should we just extend this for?
Yeah, the other thing I would just say is that, you know, I haven't even talked to my client about it, but when these tenants are evicted, I, I mean, I'm not sure their need of pursuing this, the special permit. I think it'll depend on who the next potential tenant is and what they want to do with the property. And I'll, between now and the next time we talk, I'll have some discussions with them and try to find out what the intentions are. But I think continuing this for two months is probably the most appropriate thing to do at the moment.
That sounds good to me. No, and, and obviously, once you know what the proposed use is, there are a number of uses that are allowed as a right that you may not need a special permit for. If it does require a special permit, then we'll want to know who the tenant is, what, how they're using the property. Some lease plans on how the property would be laid out and used, that sort of thing. But we can, we get, we can get there when you're ready at this point. If you would like to request an extension until, that would be the December hearing. I don't think we have a date yet, but it's typically the second Thursday in the month. November, December, one, two.
Which is.
That would be the ninth. If that, do we have a, how's that work with my board?
December ninth for, for for the December meeting day. I'm available. That's.
And Maria, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think it's okay.
I know. It's a long ways away. December, it's all holiday times. And that's wonderful. If, again, if you would just make that request, we will approve it.
I, I'd respectfully request that this hearing be continued until December ninth, twenty twenty-one, I assume at seven PM.
Yes, at seven PM. All in favor?
Bob Green, I.
And Ruguchi, I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Thank you.
Could I ask you one, one last question? Sorry, is, um, would you like me to, I don't know, send a letter or an email to somebody so that you have a record of who I am and I can get notice of future, if there's notice to give?
Please, if you would send that to Kathy.
Kathy, okay. Kathy Morgan.
Kathy Morgan. And then she can keep you posted, but otherwise, we'll just have the expect to see folks in December. So thank you very much for coming. I appreciate you giving us the updates and best of luck with your recalcitrant tenants.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Jerry, we have kept you too long on your birthday.
That's why I wait, right? Hopefully I have many other birthdays.
Hopefully you'll have many others to spend with us on Zoom.
Happy birthday, Jerry.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Jerry. I, one other thing we, Kathy and I talked about earlier was just the December meet, I'm sorry, November meeting. Kathy is away the third and tenth, third and, when are you away, Kathy?
The third to the eleventh.
Eleven. Okay. So we were looking at the eighteenth, the third Thursday in November for our next hearing.
I'm available.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm available as well.
You're perfect. Thank you, Maria. All right.
Day after my birthday.
Kathy, please put that in the, in our records so we can remember. Appropriately wish, wish Vincent a happy birthday at our next meeting.
Birthday meetings.
And I think that's it. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. I appreciate the, appreciate everyone's input. Got a good group here.
Okay, hi all.
Good night.